All right, I'm going to go and call the Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, meeting of the Quest School Committee to Order. Reminder that due to the public health crisis, this otherwise in-person public meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. It's being streamed live on Facebook on Cohasset 143 TV. And would all members of the school committee that are present tonight, please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Colery. Mrs. Marr is not present tonight. Mr. Kearney is not present tonight. Mrs. St. Orange.
Present.
And present Craig McClellan. So with three out of five members present, we do have a quorum, so we will continue the meeting at this time. I will take any public comment. Public comment is, of course, people have heard me say this before, it's reserved for any statements or discussion points that are not related to items or issues that are already listed on the agenda. If your discussion points or topics of discussion are related to agenda items, just please reserve those until we reach that point of the agenda. Second to the attendees to chime in with anything.
Excuse me for one second. I'm noticing that there's no chat box on here. No question and answer.
I just noticed that as well.
So I we would need to go into settings, Pat. I
Yeah.
The host can probably resolve right now.
I think I have to go into, let me see.
I know. If you want to make me a co-host, I can go in and do it if you want.
Well, I can go back into the actual meeting. The problem is, I don't know that I can go into the settings when we're going live here, Dr. Scollins.
I know. That's why I wonder if you make me a co-host, but I am afraid I will shut everybody down.
I don't know why it's not on here, but maybe what you could do, Dr. Scollins, if you maybe go off camera and call Dan, he had, I just talked to him about something else.
Okay.
He may be able to adjust this for us. And I guess I'd recommend Chairman McClellan that we hold public comment until we're able to resolve that issue, which will hopefully be shortly.
If you didn't, I would have Dr. Sullivan. And here's what everyone can do. They can email me at C McClellan, that's C M A C L E L L A N at Cohasset K12.org, C M A C L E L L A N at Cohasset K12.org. And is it Cohasset M A K12.org or is it?
Cohasset K12.org.
Cohasset K12.org, yeah. So email me with any questions. I'll be checking my email. But in the meantime, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report so that we do not keep the building principals on longer than they need to be, including our student advisors as well. So with that, turning to, turning the meeting to our superintendent schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chairman McClellan, and thank you, principals for being here, and Jenna, and of course, the committee. Obviously, we're on the eve of a big storm, our first storm of the year, though he's exciting, and also a historic event in Cohasset Public Schools where we have our first full remote day, where we would have had a cancellation. We're going to talk about that later in the meeting. And I should say that the specifics of how we handle full remote days or cancellations or delays will really have a lot to do with some of our bargaining that will go on with the CTA. And then, of course, our work with school committee and what school committee determines is appropriate. But this one coming up, we were able to have some conversations quickly with the Cohasset Teachers Association leadership and get enough to support to go for this day. The basic idea is to continue to keep the continuity of learning going. Obviously, we have, because we had a after Labor Day start this year, we have a June 23rd last day. So with that in mind, you know, we don't really want to go too deep into, any deeper into the summer than we have to. All I'll say is that this, I view this as just another tool in our bag of tricks when it comes time for weather situations and decisions. And I don't think we'll do it every single time. But of course, you know, if we are able to prepare and the conditions are correct for us to do it, I think it could be a very good move for us, for the reasons I just stated. We'll talk about that more. And of course, I was able to get out my frequently asked questions to the community, and I was able to provide that for the school committee ahead of time. So we'll take a look at that. I'm sure there'll be some interesting conversations. And I don't think what we have, what will happen tomorrow will necessarily be indicative of the way we handle full remote or non-formal days even next year. But in the, in the short term, I think it's something we should, we should discuss and then obviously have more discussions later as we think about this and the impact of it. Quick COVID-19 update, obviously, as we had anticipated, our rates are moving up in the community and the, I should say, the town. It's been happening, you know, everywhere. So we're in a tough time of COVID, and we just have to all, of course, double down with our precautions. Happy to say we haven't had any new cases for school community members this week. Clearly, some of our school community members did test positive last week, and I communicated all of them to the community and our thoughts and warm wishes go out to those community members. We haven't had any transmission within the schools to date. That's a good thing. But we're mindful of everything that's going on, not only in the schools, but outside of the schools. And we're, we're really watching the data and making sure that we keep safety first in everything we do. We're doing pretty well, but we are, we're being thoughtful and, and are listening to, you know, what's happening around us. And I just want everybody to, to be aware of that. On a very bright note, we did come to terms with a memorandum of memorandum of agreement with our Cohasset Teachers Association. The school committee took a vote on that last meeting. The CTA did ratify that. So that's great as we move forward together. And of course, we're on the brink of the holiday season where we're moving into a much needed break for our wonderful students, for our incredibly hardworking and amazing staff and faculty, and our really dedicated and committed leaders. And I'm lucky today to have Principal Scott, Principal Mills, Principal Farrell, and Principal Sullivan with us, you know, in addition to, obviously, Sue Owen and Dr. Scollins. But and I'm going to have them speak in a minute. But while I have them here publicly, I just want to tell them how much I appreciate their leadership, and the whole school district appreciates your leadership. I know I speak for the staff and that, in that throughout this whole ordeal. And really, it's been nonstop for them since March 13th. And I don't get enough chances to thank my principals personally, and certainly not publicly. So I just want to make that known publicly that how much I appreciate the work that they do. And it has not been easy for them. It's been a real, as you all know, in the community, it's been, it's been a never ending saga of twists and turns throughout this whole thing. And they've led with a lot of calm compassion, and I really appreciate that. And of course, we have our amazing student representative here today. We have Jenna Giglio. Jenna is a junior. I had the pleasure of introducing her to the committee last meeting along with Jake and of course Caroline, who will be sort of our all-star rotation of updating on how things are going. We did have a wonderful superintendent's school committee advisory council meeting last week, and I'm sure Jenna will update on that. And then Jenna, whatever you want to update on about, you know, how, how you're doing and how the, the students are holding up, you know, obviously, we started our sports practices and whatever, whatever you want to update on would be great. And the committee will have an opportunity to ask you any questions. So Jenna, I'll leave it to you.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much. So like Dr. Sullivan was saying, we had a student superintendent council meeting last Wednesday, and we kind of finalized our survey that we were making. And I know Caroline touched upon that two weeks ago in this last meeting. And it was, the survey was just a way that Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins could get a deeper understanding of how student life is going. It missed the whole remote learning hybrid plan. So that was really great. And thank you, Principal Scott, for sending that out to all of the teachers. And I found, I'm in cohort A, and I found that on Tuesday, all of my, my TST teacher was super adamant about getting all of our students to take it. And I know Mrs. Reardon, she's a, she's a science teacher, if some of you don't know, she told all of her classes to check their inboxes and take the survey, which is really great to hear. Yeah, and I'm super excited that everyone got to give you guys the feedback. And another topic of discussion we had last Wednesday was how the new alternating Wednesdays are going. And personally, I have found that among the student body, it's going really well. And we're super thankful to have an extra day in in-person learning, which is something that isn't, you know, the most accessible right now. And it's just obviously like the many other things happening right now during COVID. It's going to take some time to get used to for the teachers and the students because Wednesday used to be like a synchronous day for both cohorts. And some assessments are now in school that would usually be at home and vice versa. So it's just going to take some time to get used to. But once again, I am super thankful personally to get an extra day in school. And I know a lot of my peers are as well. So in other news happening this week, Best Buddies, a club at our school, was putting on a pajama day on Tuesday for cohort A, which is awesome, and Friday for cohort B. And it was just a super fun way to spread some holiday cheer. And the most, like, the most cheerful pajamas get a prize from Best Buddies. So that's awesome. And then another project that's been going on at school this week was the Pulsera Project run by the Spanish club. And if you bring $5 to school, or if you Venmo the Pulsera Project, you get this fun little bracelet I'm wearing one for $5. And they're made by children from Central America, and I'll proceed to go to them, which is super awesome. And in other news, winter sports started this week, and I know basketball, both girls and boys, and I think hockey started too. And I'm super thankful that swimming starts on Thursday for me. I mean, sorry, it starts on Saturday for me. And then morning practices, which is looking different, at 6:30 in the morning in Waymouth, start next Monday, which will be, once again, something to get used to. But I'm super thankful for that opportunity. I'm super thankful. Shout out to my coach Bo Burnett. He's done a great job organizing all this. And I'm super thankful that our town gets to have winter sports, which is something that other towns around us don't get to have. So I'm super thankful for that. Once again, and we have our snow day tomorrow, like Dr. Sullivan mentioned. And that was a big topic of conversation among all of my classes today, and how that new snow day is going to look something very, very different once again. But they, for most part, an update on the student perspective of it, we are going to be not zooming in most of my classes for attendance. And throughout the day, just getting done any assignments that the teachers have been like doing for remote throughout the week. So I have, for example, a couple of slideshows like of work that I have to turn in, or a couple like written essays assignments that I have to get done, which seems pretty, pretty good. So I still get to enjoy some of the snow outside. And yeah, thank you for all your hard work, all of you guys. And I'm super happy that it's the holiday season, and I hope you all enjoy your holiday break. So thank you.
Really well said, Jenna. Thank you. And Jenna's obviously going to be a great addition here. You know, it's nice that, that the students recognize that as a staff, you know, like, we don't want to overwhelm students with remote work on a, on a day that is, you know, snowing, and there's all kinds of scenarios with. And it's also tough for, for the staff to try to do that with their own families. So we're all kind of looking at this as, as continuing the learning. In a particular scenario like we had for this storm, we had some buildup. Our very capable staff had a lot of contingency plans they were able to build in for, you know, if we have power, if we don't have power, if, if it ends up being a super storm and there's a Friday. So this was kind of a nice time to try this and to really get a sense for how we can make sure it's a good learning experience without taking all of the joy of a, of a snow experience away from our, our kids that include our younger kids and, you know, and all that. So I, and I realize there's a, a real social emotional feeling with that. I certainly enjoyed my snow day. And I don't want to be like the Grinch that stole snow days, you know. But, but I do think that, Jenna, I think you put it well, where we can continue the learning, we can have a good learning experience. Given power scenarios, we can have more, we can have some interaction. If power doesn't afford us the opportunity, because we are able to prepare for this one, we can create a learning environment that's appropriate within a window of time to get assignments in. And this is a good example of when a remote day would be very, I think, very positive because we had time to really dig in and plan for it. So that's a, that's good to hear that. Any questions for Jenna or thoughts for Jenna on what she presented? And I'm so psyched about the student advisory council with the suit, you know, my advisory council with Dr. Scollins. It's, what I love about it is it's going to open up even more student voice. And we're looking to get some middle schoolers in there for our next meeting and move that survey down to the middle school and then try to get Deer Hill involved in some way before the end of the year as well. But, you know, principals, all the principals here have been really working on getting more student voice. ICIA, for instance, that you'll hear more about next time with Principal Scott and Principal Mills. But it's good to hear that students are answering that because that will help the building, I'm sure. Questions for Jenna?
Yikes. Audio sometimes is a little bit difficult. Fabulous job. Thank you. That was a really great update. You actually answered most of my questions as you continue to provide your update. And I really appreciate your enthusiasm. It is refreshing and a lovely way to start the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Colery. Mrs. St. Orange.
Um, yeah, kudos to you. That was a very well organized presentation. So also compliments to your teachers who've prepared you to do that. I am curious, and I don't think we've had an update on this, but just along with winter sports starting with basketball and swimming, will there be, will there be spectators allowed? Do you know, like, what is the, no?
No, at least for swimming personally, we're going to have virtual meets, which is very different. But I think we'll be like zooming the coach of the other team and just taking times manually and sending them over to the other coaches. And I don't believe there'll be spectators. Maybe they'll get them on the Zoom somehow, but I don't, I don't know whether they'll have.
That's great to hear. It's just a creative solution to keep, keep the winter season going. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Right now, Lydia, the, the social league, we're not having spectators. That's the plan. So that may shift as time goes on. Right now, we don't have fans planned. And I'm not going to put Principal Scott on the spot. But Brian, if you want to jump in, he may know more than I do if the questions continue about that. But.
Yeah, we have a gradual agreement to see how things go, see how the cases are working, and gradually include spectators if the conditions allow us to. The biggest, the biggest difference between the winter sports and the fall sports is that a lot of the modifications have to do with the physical spaces. So how you have to set up your gym, as Jenna mentioned, you know, not having teams cross in the pool. So we really have to get a good sense of how that's going to work. And a lot of the teams in the social league have already suspended some sports. So we want to keep them going, but we think that it's prudent to kind of leave fans out for now. Most of the, if not all of the meets, though, I believe, are going to be livestreamed. So people will have an opportunity to watch them.
That's great. It's just so nice to hear that the kids can still be active and engaged in exercising and do it in a safe way. Terrific.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Thank you, Jenna, for an excellent first update. Great job. Very upbeat and optimistic and enthusiastic. It's clear that you'll be a hugely valuable asset to the committee. So thank you so much for taking the time to join us. And I think we all hope that you get to enjoy a little bit of your snow day. I'm sure that Dr. Sullivan and Principal Scott are also looking forward to building a few snowmen tomorrow. So hopefully we can all do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. And I'll let you go now so you can enjoy the, watch the weather forecast, right? See the snow coming about.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Shall I press on, Chairman McClellan?
You certainly should, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So next on our agenda, as I mentioned, I have our four amazing principals here to give us a brief presentation each regarding their school improvement plans. And I should mention, they may mention, but the school improvement plans are created by their school councils, which obviously include parental representation, school committee person on the, on the committee and staff, clearly, on the committees to create improvement plans for our buildings each year. These school improvement plans, we discuss as a group, but they do tie into our strategic plan. And as we move forward, forward with our strategic planning, that will always be able to tell that we're in alignment because they will all really relate to the strategic plan. So I will share my ability to share screen. And the lucky beginner is Principal Scott. So I'm making you a co-host, Principal Scott, and I will let you take over the sharing of your screen. You all set? Can see it very clearly.
So I appreciate letting me present this evening. I'll just begin with a brief kind of orientation to school council and the school improvement plan, and then get right to our goals. We are very fortunate to have a veteran committee. All of the teachers, the parents, and Mrs. Colery, our school committee liaison have been on the committee for almost three years, which is really helpful considering all of the changes that we've kind of gone through in the evolution of the school improvement plan. And we have three new students this year. So ninth grader is Charlie Lankow, and Noah McDowell, and 11th grader Bridget Mahoney. And they've been very good in the first few meetings that we've had. For those unfamiliar, the purpose of the school council is really looking at five things that culminate in the school improvement plan and drive our priorities for the year. And those include looking at the budget and the needs of students, developing goals that meet those needs within the resources, and providing awareness of, of new initiatives. So we look at things like the handbook, school policies, or school procedures. And as Dr. Sullivan said, make sure that we're in alignment with the strategic plans so that we're driving it from the top all the way through the district. Typically, underlying those conversations is a review of certain data points. And those would include things like standardized test scores, enrollment, projections, class sizes, discipline statistics, attendance information. Because of the closure in the spring and the model that we're operating, that data isn't as useful right now. So while we're still paying attention to enrollment and historical data, a lot of what we're using this year comes from the institutional climate and inclusion assessment. Because even things like average class sizes take on a lot of interpretation when you're in a hybrid model. And you might have a total class size that's pretty high, but only 15 students maybe in one location at a time. So we've kind of pared down what we're, we're taking a look at. As people know, some of the goals we were able to accomplish last year included more awareness of physical security measures and better communication. And both of those data points were shown within the ICIA survey. And anecdotal feedback about community, communication seems to suggest that we've have largely met those. So the ICIA survey, for example, showed a big increase in student awareness of policies around bullying, physical security responses. We've already had a few incidents this year, and the students and staff have responded very smoothly. So I feel very confident about that. I feel pretty confident about our communication. And so they're not going to be listed as, as goals in the plan, although obviously, they certainly remain priorities. We knew going into this year that we were going to have capacity issues, room capacity issues. And so as early as last spring, we were able to identify some learning opportunities where students could work on meaningful work that was, that complemented our program of studies, but didn't necessarily happen or have to happen within the classrooms. So for example, we received a very generous grant from the CEF for students to work with the Center for Student Coastal Research in learning geographic information systems and that platform. And they came up with a variety of different projects that were in the process of trying to make a little bit more public. But they're very creative, informative expressions that work with some of our community partners. We have students taking second languages in addition to our French and Spanish offerings. So we have a student taking Swedish, for example. We have one that just signed up for Arabic. We have two students taking versions of calculus that we don't offer. And we continue to partner with places like Holly Hill, 143 TV. And in addition to that, we've expanded the number of virtual high school seats that we offer. So we brought that from 40 to 55. And so our students are having much broader experiences where, in many of the cases, they're driving not only learning, but also the entire project itself. They set the goals, they set the parameters, they work with some of the adults, but it's very independent. So we're happy to see that that is going as well as it is. The second goal is an iteration of a goal from last year. And initially, we were looking to collect a variety of data that would inform the health of our school. So almost call it a data dashboard of sorts that would help us look at student behaviors, academic performance, and help us determine the areas of focus. Some of those data points are on hold. For example, like an MCAS data point isn't particularly useful because we didn't take the MCAS last year. But much of the work that we're doing around how students work remotely is going to help us create better solutions to things like chronic absenteeism. We've had a lot of really surprising success with the remote program and students who were school refusal before, our tiered support system. So students who are hospitalized or are out for a variety of reasons. All of these flipped remote models, now that we have them, create a lot of additional tools that we can have for, for students to close gaps in their learning and close it a lot quicker. And just instruction in general. So this year really is, is less of the data dashboard looking and more collecting some of those resources that we can really feel like will close some of our gaps going forward. Our third goal is also an evolved version of a prior year goal around your universally designed assessment practices. And the hybrid of the remote models kind of forced this discussion in a way that wasn't as urgent before. So we've really identified the need to reevaluate the purpose of assessment, the ways in which students are able to communicate their ideas, to drill down on the skills that we're really after, to build in student trust into our assessments, to make them more authentic, not that they weren't before, but to give them kind of a more broad collaborative approach as opposed to just the regurgitation of content. And we've had some professional development, and we have some coming up on this as well. But the conversations have been really rich since August, in terms of the way we formatively assess students, the way we create some of the assessments, the way we adjust our practices in the moment, in ways that are efficient. And that was one of the real challenges is that when we get into the students and teachers alike said, the volume of what we're trying to do is significant. So our ability to kind of look at that is going to help us, I think, develop a good toolbox of ways that we can assess what students know, what they're able to do in ways that are more engaging to them and give us more information. And then finally, and I'll speak more about this on January 6th, we're continuing our goal of cultural responsiveness by following up on our institutional climate, climate and inclusion assessment. This was conducted last February, and it clearly shows that there are subgroups in the community that don't feel as if they belong in the same way that other students feel like they belong. So we've identified seven subgroups, and we're working with a consultant now to really help us unpack what those experiences are, understand what that data means, how we can create a plan to, number one, increase their voice, let them feel like they are represented in this community, that they do have a place. And right now, we're in the process of forming our subgroups. When we turn the corner in the new year, we're going to work with our consultant who's going to independently conduct those, what we call affinity groups, which is groups who identify with the same kind of subgroup. And then we'll bring in the larger community voice with focus groups with the eventual goal of creating a kind of a strategic plan, or something that will be included in our school improvement plan and in our district strategic plan to be more attentive to those students' needs in particular, not at the expense of the majority of students. I think, you know, creating those, that understanding, that dialogue is going to benefit everybody. So I see it as a real positive for students to feel a sense of belonging. And so I'm excited about how that's going. And Miss Elisa Gittens-Carl is kind of really helped us understand some of what we can do. And that has been a good, good voice for us. So, so that is the brief version of what we're trying to accomplish this year. And I can take questions if folks have questions. Proceed however you like.
Thank you. So Dr. Sullivan, what I think I'd like to do with these school improvement plans are just sort of address them as each principal goes through them, because then we can, then each principal can, even though it's not necessarily as fair to Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell, each principal can sort of leave the meeting as we get through their presentation. But we got to promise to start with But we got to promise to start with Oz good next time and move up that way.
I think they'll all hang in for, I think, I think we decided we, if it's okay, they'll all hang in for the end.
But I We can do that.
I think you're, plus I'd have a complex, I didn't feel like I'd be picking on Principal Farrell, which is, you know, don't want to do. But if it's okay, I think that's a great idea. So take questions one at a time as we go through them.
Sure. Principal Scott had told me he wants to stay for the whole meeting anyway, so. Sure. Principal Scott, could you mind, would you mind just going back one slide? Just I was just still reading it when I. Okay, so let's, does any members of the school committee have any questions for Principal Scott, Mrs. Cleary?
I don't have questions necessarily, but I do have some thoughts. And I, I want to say that whenever anyone asks me about our district and what I think the biggest assets are in our district, always at the very top of the list is our leadership team. And I'm just going to gush for a minute. Just now, I want you all to know that this applies to all of you. All of our building principals, I feel like we are so, so fortunate to have each of you in the position that you're in. I thought that, but especially as we've sort of navigated this very uncharted territory this year, you have all, at every turn, I think, demonstrated how, how focused on your student and staff's safety, but also achievement you are, and I really, really value that. And, you know, Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins, I feel like I hope hear it from me often also. That applies to them too. And Principal Scott, you are certainly. I remember when I heard the commencement speech last year, I think, was it last year that we went to?
We didn't have it last year.
Oh, yeah, sorry. What year is it? That was such an amazing opportunity for everyone who was there to see how much you value each student in your building and how well you know them, which is different, right? Like, it's hard to really know who kids are, especially, you know, when you look at the results of the climate assessment, there, there is work to do. But it's very clear and you demonstrate it often and really well that you know these kids and you appreciate them for who they are. And I think that that also stands out in this improvement plan, and I want to thank you for that. I think that in in this time, it's very easy to see the transition to remote instruction as only a challenge and an obstacle. And it's very clear that you have made it a priority to find the ways that you can use this opportunity to benefit our students as you outlined with your language courses that people are, that the students are taking. And so I think that that, while it seems maybe subtle in some ways, is so critical and so important to have leadership that looks for the opportunity in challenges is priceless. And I just want to thank you so much for being one of those leaders. And of course, anything I can continue to do to participate in any of these very well constructed goals, happy to do. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. And I agree, I'll be telling my grandchildren about that speech. Mrs. St. Orange, any questions for Principal Scott?
I don't have any questions. Everything is very clearly laid out. I would just like to add to Ms. Cleary's compliments. I'm just, I'm very excited about these goals, which I feel like is maybe not a phrase I say often. But just even like independent, just especially the independent study element. I just, I went to Cohasset High School and was able to participate in an independent study. And I just think that our student population is so incredible and such an amazing resource in our town to be able to have even further connection between, between our schools and the community and and the great organizations that are out there is just really exciting that it not only, you know, is great for the kids, but, but all the organizations will benefit from it too. And I'm just excited as that, you know, is further developed in town. It's, I'm excited that my kids will get to be a part of it, but also that, that, you know, it's a, it's a two-way street and the community benefits and the schools benefit, so.
I think it's been a great, it's been a great partnership and thought partnership with Jack Buckley and with CSCR too. And a lot of these overlap. So, for example, we had one student, GIS, the Geographic Information Systems, is like a big mapping software that students learn. And one of the student projects was recognizing the lack of diversity or at least lack of obvious diversity in Cohasset to send out a survey to the faculty that would map their cultural experiences. So, for example, I went to the Soviet Union when I was in the sixth grade. And so I have, you know, that is as part of my repertoire and I worked in Boston for 10 years. And so that, you know, has an element to it. So I'm really curious to see what she comes back with, where our mostly, you know, white affluent community now all of a sudden spreads out across the globe into different continents and can kind of reflect on different experience. I think that'll be really, really interesting. So I like the overlap and I love the fact that you don't have to really work to motivate kids. They come up with the ideas and, and really drive it. And we've had some, some really awesome work over the years. You know, we just had one student graduate from college and got, I want to say he's a Rhodes Scholar now, he's going to study shark population in Indonesia. And that started a little bit with an independent study that he did with Dr. Tomeh as a part of a science project.
And you got a full bright, didn't full bright?
That's what it was, full bright, yeah. Exciting things.
It's terrific. Thank you so much for, for guiding, guiding the school through that process. It's terrific.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Principal, Principal Scott, I don't, I don't have, I don't have any real questions other than I agree. So I just asked you to go back to that slide because I was, I was looking at it and I completely agree that issues surrounding gender should be highlighted. And I wonder though if number five, and I'm not trying to tell you how to, how to write your, your presentation, but I'm wondering if it may be more appropriate to just, rather than females, say something, you know, more abroad like gender and gender identity or something like that. Because I think that that's, that may be more, I may encompass more. And it's just a suggestion for you to consider as you move forward through this process.
Yeah, the females one is a little bit different. It's not, it's not the gender difference in the same way that like the LGBTQ kind of fits into it like a separate marker or black student fits into a separate identity group. The females one is a little bit more coming out of some of their different experiences. So before I get too fine a point with that, I wanted to kind of unpack what they were talking about when they felt like. For example, one of the points is that the community wasn't as caring as the males population thought. So what does that mean? You know, in what ways is it not caring, in what areas? And to try to kind of unpack that a little bit. It was very different than the other six groups.
So Brian, you're saying unpack those individuals who said they identified as a female?
So when you look at the survey data, again, we can go over it on the sixth. A lot of
Presenting this on the sixth.
When they break down the, the survey data, they break it down by middle school and high school, by grade level and by male and female and then by subgroup. So you'll see that black students, for example, feel like they are disproportionately targeted in terms of discipline procedures. Now, if I print out the discipline reports from school, that doesn't show that. So I want to go in and figure out what exactly their experiences in the classroom are that give them that perspective. The females is the same kind of idea. If they're reporting 15% less than males, that the community is caring, but what part of the community and what ways is that being represented? You know, is it, is it associated with anything in particular? So really just getting a big enough subgroup to say, yeah, you know, whatever my experiences is, this is, this is kind of how I feel when I'm in the building. Because if you look at some of the other, certainly the academic markers, the college acceptances and some of the quantitative data, it's very even. So what's the difference is kind of what we're going after.
Okay, thanks. Well, I trust your approach. I just, it was something that sort of stood out to me, so I wanted to highlight that. Thank you so much for your time and all the work that went into this, Principal Scott. And we'll look forward to hearing from you during your next presentation next year.
That's right, right, right. In other words, in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
I can't seem to unshare my screen, Dr. Sullivan, so I don't know if it's still being shared or not.
It is. So if you go to
There we go, I'm on a different.
Okay, great. Glad you figured it out. I was going to have trouble explaining. All right, Principal Mills, I'm now making you a co-host and you may now share your screen. You got it? Good to go. Up John, you're muted.
How's that?
It's, it's good. You know, one of my New Year's resolutions is to figure out a better way to say you're muted. I don't know what it would be, but I got to figure it out.
No, I think, yes. It's better to be kind of candid and straightforward. So but what you would miss the first time when I was muted, I was saying, thanks very much for inviting all of us. And I appreciate being able to share the work of my school council and, you know, this year's school improvement plan. You know, I'm thankful to be able to work with the parents and the educators that I do work with. And they're all just tremendously dedicated to the continual improvement of CMS. So that's the school council. Like Principal Scott, I did want to just include student enrollment. You know, not to, not to delve into normally the school council process, you do look at a lot of different data points, really because of the closure in the, you know, last spring. And we're fully focused on the hybrid model now. You know, it was kind of an unusual situation where that sort of data wasn't looked at. Much of what we're focusing on this year for the school improvement plan, you know, we're, we're kind of describing in the school improvement plan what we're doing as opposed to being, having the opportunity to build it last spring and then facilitated or implemented this year. So the focus of the school improvement plan is both the hybrid model, but it's also the middle school action plan on which the middle school was originally founded as well as district goals. The first of the four goals was around SEL. Really with the emotional toll that the disruptions of 2020 wrought, you know, disruptions like the pandemic and economic hardship and civil unrest, all these things affecting students as well as their families. The, the council and I really agreed that the social, emotional learning and welfare of our students would be our primary and our first goal. We really approached this goal by, or our action steps are about providing in-school support and counseling. And, and part of that's made possible by the additional point five counselor that you gave us last year. And it's, it's really made a difference and it came right at the right time. The tiered support system that we, that we utilize has offered us opportunities to accomplish this goal. Workshops led by faculty around SEL for students. We've had after-school opportunities to help students feel connected to each other in our school. Things like Pawn Street Press, we have a huge staff this year and there, we just today shared their last, the most recent edition of the newsletter. We were able to run our enrichment program completely relying on parents' volunteerism and the work of the PSO to help coordinate it. And, and that made a really big difference because it gave kids something to do and something to focus on and opportunities to be connected with each other while maintaining either social distance, doing it through Zoom. We're doing it in ways that we could provide safety. And then lastly, certainly in collaborating with the district on PD opportunities to help teachers continue to hone their skills around SEL. So that's to us, the, really the cornerstone of our school improvement plan. Smart, the second smart goals around instruction, especially in light of the, the hybrid model that we're using. And, and really our faculties have really had to reinvent their instruction in their curriculum almost on the fly this year. We work to improve our instruction to continually enhance student learning. This goal focuses on the ongoing innovation and collaboration between faculty, collaboration with our IT department and specifically the director, our new director of instructional technology, Lisa Radden, and the district, the various district professional development initiatives like this past Monday. So all those together, you know, together, you know, we've, we've tried to accomplish or create ways to create time for our faculty to innovate. So together, those are some of the ways we're doing, keep bolstering and improving and reinventing hybrid instruction, which we're, like I said, kind of learning about on the fly. Our third goal is around cultural inclusivity. Really making CMS an inclusive environment where all students feel welcome and safe is a critical part of our identity and our culture. I would say fostering a safe environment for students is, it's in the very DNA of who we are as a school. The process begins by understanding ourselves and our student experience, analyzing data that we've collected, like the ICA, the assessment that was recently, what was done last year and recently shared with us. And really use it as a jumping off point to provide opportunities to explore and further discuss and unpack who we are as a school. And then hopefully build, build the programming and activities that, that will really promote like positive relationships and continue to make the school more welcome and place. And our fourth goal is around family and school collaboration, which is always an important part of the school improvement plan. The challenge this year really is, how do you foster this, this continued collaboration in a, you know, in a pandemic world? So that you can't invite parents to events like concerts and plays and an open house, for instance, that naturally fosters collaboration. So we've worked on our action plan is about, you know, leveraging the technology and tools that, that we have in order to continue to collaborate with, with parents and make them feel connected and involved and knowledgeable about what happens in school every day. So those are the four parts of our, our school improvement plan.
Thank you, Principal Mills. Do any members of the, any members of the school committee have questions for Principal Mills relative to the CMS school improvement plan? Mrs. Cleary?
Again, I do not have questions, but well, actually I do have one question. Will still, the middle school and the high school, I think the first time the culture assessment was administered, it was the same school. And now you've also taken it again as separate schools, right? Did that happen?
To answer your question, last year it was conducted and we had six through 12 take the same assessment. The, the initial data was shared as a six through 12 building. We've, we've worked with the consultant that did the assessment. She's been able to sort of disaggregate the data for me. And it's taken a little bit longer, but she's been able to provide it in sort of chunks by, you know, subgroups in the six through eight range. So we've been able to, and we're continuing, I just got the last piece today, continuing to sort of focus down and look at what's going on just in our school instead of looking at a six through 12 institution.
And, and so I just want to say that I'm grateful that that work continues. And I think that there's probably, there's value in both, right? Like being able to analyze the data set for the same sort of large group, but I understand why it's useful to you to know what's going on in your building specifically. large group, but I understand why it's useful to you to know what's going on in your building specifically, right? So I'm just glad that that work is continuing and I'm glad that you both have been incorporating this into your plans and your goals, and I want to thank you both for your continued um, focus on that. I think that is essential. I think happy kids learn more effectively and I love it that you both emphasize that in your plans. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's really important to 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 focus on what the data says because I think sometimes we have those like really powerful moments. And, um, you know, we we can't make, you know, broad sweeping generalizations or conclusions based on anecdotal experiences. So it's it's really important to have data like this at our at our, uh, you know, at our disposal, so we can better understand what's going on and throughout the system as opposed to, like I say, just a a brief encounter.
Great. Thank you.
Principal Mills, thank you, Mrs. Colery. Miss St. Orange, before you ask a question, I just want to repeat because there's a few more attendees now. Um, the the chat feature isn't working tonight for anyone that wants to chime in and so we will rectify that for future meetings. But in the meantime, um, take my cell number down and you can simply just text me any sort of comments you want me to to read. I was giving my email earlier, but it's probably easier to just give my cell number. Um, which is, I think frankly, on the internet anyway, but but it's six one seven seven five zero zero two seven seven. That's six one seven seven five zero zero two seven seven. So if you have any comments, please don't be shy about texting me and I'll, uh, I'll I'll make your your voice heard, okay? And and sorry for the chat feature not working tonight. Um, but that goes for the folks watching via Facebook too, that works that way. Um, so moving on, Mrs. Mr. St. Orange, do you have any questions for Principal Mills?
Um, no specific question. It's just exciting to see the middle school continue to be developed as a middle school. Um, I think that is just such a um, precious population, I guess, as I say, as a former middle school teacher. Um, and to be able to look at it as its own school and its own population of students is just this unique place in development. And I just think these these goals are are terrific for this year. There's so much to work on this year. I mean, if you're just talking about instruction alone, that is just such an enormous thing to tackle right now with hybrid and remote learning, so. Just thank you for all of your work and for taking care of our middle schoolers.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Uh, yes, Principal Mills, thanks for all the work on this, very relevant, purposeful, uh, meaningful uh, improvement goals. And, uh, thank you for continued efforts in making our middle school a a wonderful place. You've been great. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, Dr. Sullivan, can we can we move on to Principal Sullivan?
Yes, you certainly can. Um, Principal Sullivan, are you ready? I will make you a co-host.
Yes, I'm ready.
And you now may share. Thank you, Principal Mills, for that and. Should be good to go, Alex.
Yep. Are we good?
Right on. Looks good.
Excellent. All right. So I'm gonna skim through these first couple of slides. Um, hold on if I can get it to advance, that is. There we go. All right. I first want to begin by introducing our school council members for this year. We have some returning members. Actually, we're all returning members with the exception of, uh, Mrs. St. Orange, our school committee liaison. So we were very excited to welcome her to our council this year. And as Principal Scott shared, it's really nice to have that consistency, especially during these times. Um, also, our data, you know, is a little sparse this year without without the MCAS to factor in. Um, so really I just included some enrollment data. Um, that is, you know, probably shifted since this plan was submitted a little bit ago, but we're in good shape with our class sizes and our cohort cohort sizes and I do think a silver lining of this year is that opportunity for really small group instruction in a in a lot of different capacities. Uh, as you know, we are all defining our goals through the SMART goal format. So I will get right to it. My first goal and and one thing that our school council really looked on with this year is a a smooth transition from our goals from last year. And then also, um, you know, trying to be responsive to our current climate, um, while still moving our school forward. So cultural competence has had a role in the school improvement plan since I've been here and it really um, is a a very cornerstone of what the kinds of things that we're trying to accomplish at Deer Hill. To highlight some pieces of this goal, really one thing is that this year we are making an effort um, to think beyond the idea, um, what it means to be a culturally diverse and inclusive school. And then also touching on some of the themes that the secondary principals talked about. You know, with gender and other pieces and identity and other pieces like that that drive a truly inclusive environment. Um, I'm really proud of some of the things we've already done to address this. Um, an example of that is a fifth grade identity unit that was implemented across the grade level this year. That really helps students think of themselves and and kind of their place in our school community, but also their own sense of self. I think fifth grade is a really important time to do something like this, uh, as they're beginning to transition to the middle school. And I really see the staff as anchoring anchoring them in a way that will serve them well as they move forward into that. Into that, you know, kind of a little bit scarier position in school. Um, this goal also recognizes that inclusion extends to learning styles and needs as well. Um, and we addressed this through, again, our curriculum and what we are presenting and including students in the process of creating for themselves. But then also the different models that we have in place for instruction, such as our co-teaching. That helps, you know, address the needs of students and and provides those multi-tiered systems of support. Another part I wanted to highlight in this goal is the idea of the collaborative relationships that we continue to build and I'm, um, you know, whether it's families presenting traditions, you know, school-wide, which we enjoyed this year. Or our continued partnership with the high school, the diversity working group just shared a um, activity that they created for our students around Hanukkah. And so having those kind of partnerships are really important to making it, you know, Deer Hill a welcoming place and inclusive place. And a place where, you know, students feel that they they can see themselves. The second goal is, um, geared around our new math curriculum. And really, if you come to Deer Hill right now, the buzz in the air is all about math. And I know we had a learning walk recently. And it's really exciting to see just the presence that math has taken in our building. It's evidenced very physically. When you go into a classroom, you're seeing a lot of um, number corners and math thinking on the walls and and really student-driven instructional products. There's also just a lot of enthusiasm around math right now, a lot of positive energy. And speaking as a former reading specialist who loved teaching math as a classroom teacher. Um, it's it's really just a nice thing to see. And so um, I really, we couldn't be happier with this new Bridges adoption. I was actually speaking about it with Dr. Scollins today. And we were just saying that it sells itself, that teachers are very invested in it, students are invested in it. And so, you know, our role is to just make all of that possible through our PD. Through outreach to families to make sure that they are as excited as we are about it. And and understand the why behind, you know, some of the things that are happening and how it might look different from math. As we experienced it ourselves and as even our students experienced it recently at Deer Hill. Um, to that end, our math specialist, Chrissy Thonay, recently presented at our PSO meeting. That was a great way to connect with families. Bridges itself has many ways for families to get a a real sense of what they're about as well. Um, lastly, I want to highlight just the role of pacing in this year's action plan. This year, you know, more so than ever, we are really, again, in tune to our student needs. And how do we close gaps that are, you know, inevitable in a pandemic? And how do we build mathematicians that are confident about their skills? And again, I want to refer to a conversation I had with Dr. Scollins today about the really high-level critical math thinking that our students are doing right now. And their ability to articulate that thinking and be flexible with that thinking and that is going to serve them well. It's not as linear as past math programs where you march through a curriculum. And if you don't get to something, then it's gone forever. There is a much more of a spiral to what we're doing. Things are integrated and embedded. Um, if you're doing a math lesson about fractions, the likelihood is high that you're also incorporating money, time, and multiple other concepts. And so that really speaks well to this program and this goal. I have three goals to share with you tonight, and the last goal is also driven uh, in large part just by the nature of this year, though I think it is a long-term goal as well. And that is how we use technology at Deer Hill. And, you know, I think that our learning curve, we brought on board a lot of new skills very quickly in our current climate. And really our responsibility now, we're at that point where we are looking at them critically. Really making sure that we're crystallizing and coming together around the ones that are most purposeful and relevant to student instruction and learning. And then making sure that we have all the tools and resources and knowledge and PD and support that can make those things happen. And, you know, Google Classroom, Dreambox, you know, Lexia, all of those things, as well as things such as Loom. Our PD last, uh, just earlier this week, we were introduced to Jamboard, which was a great resource I was sharing with Lisa Radden. That, uh, it was so nice because teachers are comfortable now when something new is introduced to them because they can anchor it to another piece of technology that they know. Uh, so Jamboard is has characteristics that are similar to Google Slides and similar to Loom. And so teachers were like, oh, I can do this. And I think a year ago, it would have been overwhelming to them and so and to students alike. And so that's a really exciting piece for that as we look at um, really the why behind our technology use. Again, that goes back to um, the SAMR model, which our district has done work on. And also making sure that we're supporting students where they are and moving them along that continuum of learning. And so that is, uh, technology really, you know, belongs as an integrated resource and not as a as a standalone thing. It has to be embedded in that why, and that's something that we are working to do through this goal. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you so much, Principal Sullivan. Uh, members of the school committee, Mrs. Colery.
Thank you, Principal Sullivan. As usual, a very informative, well-thought-out, organized presentation. I really, really love the specificity that you lay out in your goals. Um, I also like that you refer to the MECO team because I don't think Ms. Atisha gets any shout-outs and I.
She has done a lot for our students this year, especially our students in Teca. She provides a lot of support to them.
Yep. Um, and I really love the third goal. I think it was, it it's obviously timely. But as I said before, I think a leadership team that sort of embraces the challenges that we're facing and can reframe them as opportunities um, is really preparing us well as we move forward. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colery. Mrs. St. Orange.
Thank you so much, um, Sullivan. I, um, I also just appreciate how how well laid out your goals are. I am, I am, I share your enthusiasm about the Bridges program. I am just so excited about it and I feel like us literacy specialists getting pretty psyched about math is a big deal. But it is just so approachable. And I feel like there's been just such a shift. Um, mentally about math in in our household. Um, it is something that feels like a reward now, like doing Dreambox on remote days. We get like, yes. Clara has unlocked some sort of arcade. I was like, wow, you guys are crushing the math right now. So it's just so nice to. I feel like that is not like the typical response to math. I don't. But it's really, really nice to see that shift and to just see it, um, just across the board, in school, out of school, all of it. So um, major compliments to the teachers for rolling that out because the curriculum is one thing, but presenting that and sharing that with the students is a totally, totally different thing and they are doing it beautifully. Um, and obviously being well-supported, um, by you. And then also the, um, the technology, I just, it it made me really happy to hear that people, like people's people were in a place where they were feeling ready to learn and hear something new on Monday. This has been such an overwhelming year. And our brains are flooded and the teachers are doing a million things all the time. So to hear that they're feeling comfortable and confident and ready to learn and take on new things is just really heartening. And I'm I'm seeing it on my end, like it's 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 a really seamless delivery. And I know that takes so many hours on the on the front end to make it look that way, but but I'm just really impressed by how well, how well a few platforms are being embraced to deliver things so clearly to to our students. So um, just my compliments to to how beautifully it's being done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Principal Sullivan, um, thank you so much for your presentation. With regards to SMART goal number one. Um, I I I love seeing that because, uh, I I truly feel that uh, these concepts are best introduced at a at a young age. So I love seeing the elementary years. Um, the elementary schools focus on this and incorporate this into the curriculum. Um, Mrs. Colery had, uh, it 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 some point in the distant past, uh, at one of these meetings raised a a a point that has sort of stuck with me. It was really specific to gender, but I think it it relates to really any sort of different groups of humans and gender is certainly one of those differences. But, uh, I I wonder if, uh, in 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 sort of, uh, implementing goal number one. I voiced this sort of similar thing at the at Osgood School Council, um, meetings that I've been at with Ms. Farrell, um, Principal Farrell. And and that is to ensure that, so when I'm just looking back, you know, given my own own experiences as a as a kid in school. And and typically, when you break up into like small learning groups or teams or whatever it is, right? So, um, you know, boys will pick boys, girls will pick girls, and then they're, you know, in 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 sort of gender segregated groups. And and that that, you know, could also go for, um, you know, racial differences or whatever. Um, you know, a- any sort of group you can think of. And I just don't know if there's some way to ensure that, because I really do think it's so important that one major way to ensure that that we are developing very culturally competent young adults is, um, is to obviously just familiarize themselves with with differences. And and familiarize, you know, all of our students with the various differences so that it's not, they they don't really perceive it as as such a succinct difference. It's just really like, okay, well, uh, that person's female, I'm male. Or that person is, you know, Asian and I'm not, or that person's black and I'm not. It's, um, I think that just working with them and 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 sort of like, you know, basically um, having more interactions with one another, really at a very young age, really, I think, works to diminish um, the schism between, you know, any two groups of people. So I'm wondering if in implementing that group, if if that would be something that is that that the faculty in your building would be sort of cognizant of in sort of ensuring that when students are working with small groups. And, you know, having more one-on-one time, that they're just not always able to choose the sort of their own groups that like sort of, you know, either looks like them or is the same gender as them.
Absolutely. I think that's at the forefront of a lot of what they do. And they do all kinds of different things to form their groups. Um, from random groupings to allowing that choice to encourage, you know, naming it and and noticing things like, oh, I noticed all the boys are grouped together or, you know, this or that. Um, and so I do think that it is something that when you're aware of it and and you can kind of put it on the table, then you can better address it. I think we had a great, um, I followed in the footsteps of Principal Mills. And we also had a presentation in the spring from Key Flag. And there were for the staff, and there was just a lot of things that that had really visible and concrete changes in our building. And some of that is also just our language that we use, you know, teachers. Um, I shared a graphic with teachers in my morning email. You know, teachers, I shared a graphic with teachers in my morning email the other day that was all these different ways you can identify students besides boys and girls. You know, you can talk about mathematicians or scholars or scientists. And, and just how we are helping kind of expand their identity. And it's very fascinating to me. And also the intersectionality of identity is something that's always interested me. And, and there's research on what, what dominates. Like if you ask someone, and this came out in our PD, the PD that we've had as a staff has been really powerful in this regard. And if you are asked to name yourself in four different ways, what, what rises to the surface? You know, how do you think of yourself? And so I think that the district's opportunity as a staff to analyze that for ourselves translates into the kinds of conversations and groupings and interactions that our students are having. So, you know, that, that self-awareness as adults is, is an important piece of this.
Yes, thank you so much. It's exactly what I was driving at. I really was having sort of difficult time articulating what exactly, you know, I was trying to drive at. But you definitely understood what I was saying. So thank you so much. I think that's, that's really important. It's really exciting to see in the improvement plan. So thank you so much, Principal Sullivan, for your work and your continued efforts at the Deer Hill School. Moving on to our Ausgood School principal, Principal Farrell, Dr. Sullivan, is that all right with you? Moving on?
Absolutely. Thank you, Principal Sullivan. I will move to Principal Farrell. And I will give you the co-hosting rights, which you have.